Back here.
Oh.
I tell these young kids about Stattler Waldorf, they have no clue who that is.
I left my phone in the office on the charger. So somebody will probably call me. I still should have, I still should have. I still should have shut it off when I left it in there.
Yeah, silly, don't even try to mind. I gotta leave it.
Okay.
This is a gag word extended to those of us on BZA.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order at six o'clock PM. In front of you, you have the minutes from the May fifth, twenty twenty-one Zoom meeting. Once you've had a chance to look that over, I'll need a motion to approve in a second.
Some more seconds.
And in front of you, you have in your packet, the appropriation status, the vendors and the SRO report. Everything's on file downstairs. Any questions?
I'll say you got rid of that minus four hundred bucks.
On the SRO?
Yep.
Yeah, now it's minus five seventy-five ninety-nine. Anything from citizens for safety?
Not at this time.
Okay. Okay, last month under old business, we discussed the COVID guidelines, the dispatch contract with Garrettville. We had nothing under comments or any other old business. Under new business, the dispatch contract update, we did submit a counter offer to Garrettville for a one-year contract because that's what their contract, what they're proposing if they go with the county. So I offered them the current services, same exact thing as what we're currently doing for forty-two thousand for one-year contract. They're going to submit it to their committees and get me an answer like we talked before, before July first. We did mention, we did post for a sergeant's position. Under the guidelines and the requirements for the sergeant's position, four of the employees were eligible under the requirements, all four did submit a letter of interest. So I almost had the interview committee pick a diversified group of individuals and then we'll get the interview set up. So I should probably have some more information by council. Employee status update, I did have one dispatcher resign, went to Ravenna for a full-time position. I have one, I'm waiting on fingerprints back to start training. I do have one that we recently hired, she is in training. And I did have Sergeant Terry submitted a letter of resignation, his final day with the police department will be next Wednesday, June ninth. So that's what I have for that. Things should ease up a little bit with school, the last day of school is Friday. And then SRO done will then go on the road for the summer. So that'll help ease some of that burden. And we did cross-train Miranda Brothers in dispatch. So it's always good to have some of the officers cross-trained if we need. In fact, she dispatched her first shift last night on afternoon. So cross-training never hurts us. That's all that I have for the employee status update. Nothing to go to council, the distracted driving is working its way through. The only thing for finance, if somebody wants to mention where we are with the numbers far as with the proposal going to Garrettville, then they're going to run it to their committee. Nothing for parks, nothing for service. I don't know whether this be service or safety. Marty noticed that over the weekend, we did have a tree come down behind man line. It's kind of overhanging the trail, but Mary Anne is taking care of that. It's kind of barreled off right now. It's not going anywhere for the time, it's in the crook of another tree. So it's not bad, but there's quite a bit hanging over, but they're working on the plans to get that done. So if somebody mentions it to you, it's, we're not just putting barrels around, they're working on it. That's all I have for that. Nothing tabled, no executive session. Looks like I think we're going to be okay to meet in person from here on out. So unless something changes, Governor opened everything up yesterday. So, you know, the virus is gone now, now that it's June second, so we're all good there. Other than that, our next meeting is scheduled for July seventh, twenty twenty-one at six PM here. Motion to adjourn in a second.
Can you continue to do an extra patrol down at the park? I had called last week because the time capsule, when they poured the top, somebody waited long enough for November to be around and stood on top of it and put a footprint on it and also put some graffiti on there that had to be removed. They etched it in.
I saw them working, was that last night?
I know they're trying to.
They were down there working. Okay, we'll get that.
Mary Anne does have pictures, if you need to see pictures of it.
I got a quick question, I'm sure either one of you two will know. Are they going to have Art on the Hill this year?
Yes. Art on the Hill, and I want to say it's July tenth, I believe that's the Saturday from ten AM to six PM.
Okay.
Whatever that's.
My wife, my wife.
Whatever that said, I'm pretty sure it's July.
My wife wanted to know.
Yeah.
Yep, that's, that's a go. Ox Rose, the last I heard is still a go.
Yes.
Soapbox Derby.
Is the nineteenth, next Saturday as well as, is next Saturday in the, two Saturdays?
Yeah.
The nineteenth is Soapbox Derby, the same day as the Rib Burnoff.
Other than that, anything else?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Ben and Marty at six oh six.
Hi.
Hi.
You guys have a good evening.
You too.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, we hardly ever had anybody here for safety.
We moved the planning meeting to six thirty after safety. We moved it up a week.
Okay.
So that's why, that's why everybody's here.
So the planning meeting's coming up next? I'm going down.
Don't blame you, I'd go with you if I could. You too, thanks Heather.
Well, I guess I can move on.
It just started raining again out there.
As long as they pass the health department's guidelines as far as proper fire extinguishing stuff and stay away from fire hydrants and don't impede traffic, that's about, I mean, if I wouldn't have them on Main Street because we have that two-hour parking between eight AM and seven PM. You know, just follow the regular guidelines like anything else. But I haven't heard any other horror stories, nobody's brought it up.
So I didn't see it at the cemetery, but I saw you when you drove past me.
I didn't see you.
I was on, in front of Kenny Block's house, we were out in the street talking.
Oh, that's who was talking to him.
Yeah.
They replaced their steps out front of the house.
Yeah. I asked him why, I said, nobody uses them, he said, my wife does. And the old ones were bad. Anyhow, I don't know the gentleman that stopped to talk to us, but I think he owns the old post office building.
Oh, Mr. Yatso.
Yeah, and he was out running alone. Oh, he jogs all the time, but they usually jog together or walk together.
Him and his wife, yeah.
Yeah, well, she had some surgery on her foot and can't.
That's not good.
Anyhow, come to find out that he's from, we're all from the same basic area.
Oh, really?
Yeah. A lot of reminiscing.
Oh, I guess I shouldn't, I forgot.
What?
I, I put my stuff out too quick, I forgot about the BZA hearing.
What you're here for?
We have planning at six thirty after of the BZA hearing. And I forgot, got ahead of myself.
Something I noticed at the. Collision, it really did no.
Yeah. We need to get some young members. Michelle, you want to do the Oaths of Offices tonight? Okay.
So is these meeting, was it six thirty?
It's at six thirty. That's just what you need right now, Roy. Yeah, we are. We're lying there.
I don't know.
There's no meetings, but she can't, she can't, she doesn't want to turn off her television. No. Two more coming. I got him his book and I sent him the mural stuff and he had already read it online. I told him six thirty in person tonight. I'm sorry? Yeah.
She's not going to tell you.
Apparently there was a water line with a curb box buried underground from, apparently, I don't remember there ever being a building in that parking lot, but. Well, somehow it got overlooked, so they had to dig it up and replace it. So they had to bring Luli in. And so there, Luli was still working on it today.
Excuse me, please.
And I, I did speak with the manager of the Prospect Street. I, I see where that.
Still is?
Still is, and the asphalt you were talking about, I just haven't had a chance to take a picture of it yet. But they're meeting for the punch list this weekend.
Well, that's why I brought it up because I know somebody has to look. And the thing is, we'll be wondering why last year's asphalt interioring right there in a big hole. Not that we can, I don't know whether they could do something, they could at least come and try and degrease or something.
I saw two, one was a little bit, yeah.
Okay, good, thanks.
Yeah, what's going on?
I told him, I just told him I'd get up there and take pictures and I haven't done that yet. Well, I'm going to leave my stuff for planning here, but I'm going to move out of the planning area. I do have to swear you guys in though. Here, here. I'll keep it after signing, where you, whoops. Yes, sir.
I mean, all what, three, four meetings around that, or west?
Randy usually sits here, doesn't he?
First meeting I came to was like, nobody wanted to sit by you.
They can trade their, if I have them on. What? What's he looking for, a pen?
Yeah.
Do you need a pen, right?
One of my friends, you know, chicks who went and checked on their chickens.
Sorry. I've got a bazillion of them, my center.
Thank you.
Rooster, it's Kate's one, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Over on, on Prospect, the thick one on the top.
You want one, you can have this one. Wes is, yeah, it is on his left.
It's actually cheating the way I do it, you know, it's, everything's right there and easy to get you. Well.
This is an older one. She would probably be intimidated to do anything but like cower. And Barney, when somebody came in, she'd like bark really loud.
Really loud?
Yeah, believe it or not. You've certainly heard Holly bark really loud about every Zoom meeting we have.
That's your impression.
Told Holly how. Yeah, that's it.
Well, they're up there, who's in the old Malloway Greenwood? Anybody?
Nobody, that was any fun. Not filming, yet nobody's.
Maybe Julia, like the coffee shop she's always talked about, so kind of made the room. A real neat good butcher shop.
West, the distillery.
That'd be a good building standalone, you have to have a stand, go ahead, have that. We have one. I like the one on the street though. Yeah, one street though is quite nice, I like about that. And their farmer's co-op too.
How about that, maybe, and? I think farmer's co-op, I get from Hyrum, who for my farms delivers to my house every Friday, fresh produce.
I noticed a couple of years ago, there's some of the farms up northern, you know, I've been having the ownership standing to do some really serious truck funding. No, it makes sense, if you're never going west to the Mississippi, it's going to dry up and blow away and south, it ain't working real good anyway. If I were a young man, I'd be buying all the Ohio farms that anybody could. It's already started. Couple hundred acres of good plowman or the rope-like Malloway, it's very nice of another generation.
I lived in, I lived in California for four years and it didn't work, we were inexperienced.
It's a drivel.
It was horrible. Fires and everything.
It's in Colorado too, it's supposed to have a wire, you're astonished to be fired. The only, the only part of the government that really believes in climate change is military, they're pretending to believe it. They just don't know how to raise the money for the new basis.
I just put that in the name of the family. What's last week's?
Well, somebody's got a brother while working for.
Now you're doing.
Now listen to this, let me pop that.
Slipped the afternoon, we're gone.
Was on the New York.
He's actually pretty good, I've seen him in taxis, he does a good job.
We should do a caravan down in like, beginning of August down to their place and just like. Because in a day, there should be quick meeting, I would think.
Yeah, I don't think they respond, once they're settled.
I can introduce you Kevin, everyone, this is Steve Thorne, he's going to be a new BZA person. That's John Clark, my husband, he's on the planning committee, he used to be a councilperson.
Okay.
Fully retired. Scott Waiver is a councilperson, Tammy Myers, councilperson. Roy Peck, BZA, and Wes Hawkins, he's on BZA and on planning, and Tammy's on planning MVP of.
And he's the head honcho of the BZA.
Which doesn't mean much.
And I'm fine, and. You're learning what happens when you stand still too long.
Wes, if you call me, I'll swear, everybody in the break, move on. I take longer than the meeting today.
Yeah. We have traditionally read the newspaper article, is that even necessary?
I, I never thought it was.
Yeah, I was.
I think that too much used to read the minutes too, but I mean, if you just ask for a motion to approve your last minutes.
Yeah.
I mean, you're, you're the one in charge, so how.
Well, I, I've never seen it done before, I like that in, in that manner before too much, so I was.
Right. Do they need to read the newspaper article, I didn't think so, just who the party's on, what it's about.
I think we just need to read in the record what the purpose of the application is.
Well, I mean, we didn't, we never thought anything about it, you know, and so, but it's just a vision, so. I'm pretty sure that something might be going. I'm not certain, I don't know whatever it is. I wasn't going to complain, I didn't make sure of my calls or. Sometimes people don't understand that.
No, I know, right.
Say you're twenty, I have, that's probably at least thirty or so.
Yeah, I heard he made some really good, fish tacos or something when he was open.
I've not had any problems with the stuff that I bought there, but I heard.
Yeah, the only issue I was thinking about in his case, and he said he was working on it. He had a grand generator and with a door, so I think he was.
I didn't pretend. Somebody will help me. I do. The I'm doing your crazy business. Yeah. I mean, what do you need?
Well, my house, the house on the corner of High and Maple.
High and Maple. Hang on a second. High Street. Maple, right here.
Yeah.
You're the one with the fence and the brick.
Yep.
We painted that house before you bought it. Who owned it before you? Give me a name. She was old.
No, that was two, two.
Two, two people ago?
Yeah, so I, I bought from the main.
Okay, so two people ago, we painted it.
Yeah.
I mean, we maintained it for 40 years prior to the owner, prior to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, yeah, you're doing paint job.
I scraped it. I was, when Courtney was down, I went up and scraped the thing. And my painter just failed, failed. But I gotta paint my blue house. Blue house is gonna turn yellow.
Oh, good.
News on Earth, news, we're gonna turn it to Facebook.
Give me a call when you get a chance. I'll be out of town next week, so wait till July.
Yeah.
Cause I'll be in Tulsa.
Cause I'm, oh, are you? Okay.
Yeah, so they give me a call. We'll come out, take a look at it. Cause I, I usually take care of the Manaway residents more than I do. I mean, cause we don't do that much work here.
Yeah.
So when we do, I like our village looking nice.
We're gonna change it gray, white and black.
I usually leave it at 71 or 72.
That's what our house used to be.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, on the corner of Elm and Franklin.
Yeah.
I mean, when we, my first paint job.
Okay.
First time I did it, which was 25 years, 30 years ago. It was gray, white and black.
Yeah.
I like that scheme.
That's actually, yeah.
I got older, I went simple. Make my life easier.
Right.
6:30 Wes.
Okay.
6:30, alright.
I didn't bring glasses either. If I need them, thanks. Nice to meet you, Steve.
We'll call the meeting order at 6:31 PM. Do you, Mayor wanted to swear in the members?
If the three new members would raise their right hand and repeat after me, if filling your name, I.
I, Steve Thorne.
Oh, I, Randy Escher.
Stand by. Yes. To solemnly swear and affirm to support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of Ohio, the ordinance of the Village of Manaway, and to faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge the of this board of gentlemen, appeals to the best of my ability, for as long as I shall continue in office. If so, say I do.
I do.
And I haven't had a chance to swear you in since your last term was up.
Oh, I was confused. That's why I was confused. I'm like. I do. Thanks.
One copy is for you and one copy for the state. Thank you, Wes.
Yep, that's work.
Reggie, nice to meet you.
You have all received and read the minutes. Motion to approve is submitted.
I'll second.
I.
I. Who motioned and who seconded?
I, I made the motion. Roy seconded. And then all eyes down the line.
Yes, that was?
Yes.
Thank you.
I've gotten so used to Zoom. I'm not sure how to do this in person anymore.
Yeah, everyone's on Zoom, everyone has their name in front of them. So I can't, I don't recognize voices so well.
All right. Are the hearings being recorded? Topps will be available at the village clerk's office. Order of business. Let me just briefly give a brief synopsis. This application 10-21 submitted by Phil Brand. The chili station requested variance from the provisions of Manaway Village zoning code 450.09, science permitting, commercial district maximum area per sign. In effect, he's wanting to put a mural on the, on the ice cream shop. Will swear in any persons wishing to testify. Phil, you'll probably want to get swerved in.
Okay.
And you can't see me, Phil, but you solemnly swear that any testimony you give before this board will be to prove the whole hearing having been true.
I do.
All right. Phil, I briefly describe a more, what you're looking to accomplish, but can you just go in a little bit more detail?
Yeah, you know, it was, it was a concept that was come up with, by Holly Michelson. And she did the mural on the side of the coffee shop and the butcher shop. And I believe we, we gave you a picture of what she, her concept was with our application. And she, I think she has it in cursive and I think it's like a three scoop ice cream cone. It would face beside of the building on the east side facing State Route 44.
Any questions from the public?
No, I have no comments.
Any questions or concerns from the administration?
It's on the east side of the building?
It is.
Is that the view I'm looking at?
It'd be on the east side.
Okay.
I have a question. I have a question.
All right.
First of all, it's a real, it's cute. It's a nice mural. And you do own the building, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and so you will be maintaining this mural?
Yes.
Okay, that's my only question.
Great. All right. Well, chairman of the executive session.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
If it's necessary here.
It's just how we've traditionally done it.
Yeah, just.
Wait, what is the office on the left? On the right? Mayor, do you want to use your office?
You can use my office.
Use your office?
Yeah.
Hey Mayor, while we have a, while we have a minute, we have our, our board meeting on Friday morning. Is there anything you'd like me to bring up to our group?
I read the minute. I saw one. I was gonna give Sue a call and just, it's been an overwhelming day. She had the target of opportunity grant for the east side of Main Street.
Okay.
That that's a village grant. And when Dan Tillett and regional planning and planning met, that is not a village grant. Dan needs, will be going through the county with that, with, with the commissioners on that grant.
Okay.
Because the village cannot apply for a grant on public or privately owned property.
Okay. So it's, it's just a correction to her minutes about?
Right.
Yep, okay.
We, we passed legislative supportive and and council voted to make it a blighted area. So that helps on the pointing issue of the CDBD funding for it.
Okay.
So are you open for the summer now daily or just weekends?
Well, it, it, since it's 60 degrees out, but yeah, we're open for the summer now. Hopefully we'll get some warm weather. This weekend looks, looks like it's gonna start warming up, so. The, the sun sails are up, so.
I didn't even notice when I went by.
They just, they went, you know, they're not that noticeable. I was a little disappointed. They're not that noticeable from the road.
What color are they?
I'm sorry.
What color?
They're, they're red and blue with, to match the ice cream shop. But they, they, they aren't that, they are at an angle, but not quite as steep as I had hoped that. So they're not as pronounced as you, as you drive past, but do offer some shade when the sun's out, so that'll be nice.
Yeah, I went down one night last week, I thought it was, hoping to get ice cream and nobody was home.
Nobody's home. No, we're, we're, we wait till, till Memorial Day weekend to open full time. It's easier. The kids are getting out of school and it's easier to staff. I'm hoping that breakaway excursions get some traffic too. They look like they've been working really hard across the street.
There's been a lot of kayakers and canoeers down at the park, so I was hoping that they were their customers, you know, they were dropping a ball and stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, I heard some. I heard some boys going by. When I was at the ice cream shop, they sounded like they were having a great time on the river.
Good.
Floor looks nice on camera.
What?
The floor looks nice on camera.
She's been using Murphy's Oil Soap. She's been, she's some other, refresh it or renews it and that. I don't remember what it is.
Makes a big difference.
My comb deep over that carries. So we don't have to sand it. We're gonna try a couple coats of that, whatever polished waxy stuff is.
Pictures on the back wall look good too, for, you know.
How, how does the wall look from?
It does look good. I, I noticed it as soon as I signed on.
The service department painted it, or they painted the whole area up here. And then my John and a friend of mine came up and they, they climbed the ladder and Mary Ann and I directed them on how we wanted them put up, so. So it looks nicer. Well, it's better than them laying up on top of the camp hits and stuff. At least they're on the walls now.
It, it does look good. It does look good.
And I really like that gray on that one wall. A lot of the pictures came from Cindy Jansen.
You know what the?
A lot of them used to be down at the village tavern at one time, but.
Lauren found a bunch of these were postcards. She found a bunch of postcards. Council named it Outma.
Oh, wow.
Bought them for Cindy and then Cindy printed them. And hung them up down there. Yeah, we were, in fact, we found one of them in Hampshire.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. And there's, I bet Cindy still has the postcard. There's one from somebody in Aurora sending a postcard to somebody in Manaway. And it's a lie and he reads back about how bad the ride was from Manaway to Aurora. I was like, okay. Yeah, it was pretty funny. It was a fake.
Yeah, and then the one picture all the way over there, closest to the flag towards the top is a signed picture from that movie that was shot in Manaway, The Hunting. And all, everybody that was in the movie signed it.
Oh, that's nice. When, is that coming out this fall?
I'm not sure when it's gonna come out. John and I attended the red carpet event.
Yeah.
For. Not my kind of movie, but it was, it was still kind of cool because it was nice to recognize the different areas in town. And where, you know, where they were at and stuff. And it was funny because when the police car was going down the road, it would pan to the driver's side. And so you'd say, oh, there they are on High Street. And then it would go to the passenger side and it would be 44 North or something. So for somebody that lives here, they recognize when both sides are not the same, but it was, it was good. And they shot a lot of the stuff out there. We probably aware of it. Lakeside ground, sand and gravel.
Yeah.
All the reenactments from the Vietnam War, whichever war they were in, and the explosions and the stuff, they did all that out there. So a lot of people participated. Cemetery looked good. The American Legion was in the movie doing the, they're shooting off their guns at a funeral. So it was, it was just really neat.
That's cool. What's the name of the movie?
It's called The Hunting.
The Hunting.
And they're selling it to, let me ask my husband. Who, who's gonna be promoting this? What?
There's a company out of New Zealand.
Company in New Zealand's going to be promoting it to get it out. And they're even talking about a sequel for it.
Oh, really?
Twist at the end that. So.
Will they do the sequel in Manaway?
That's what they said.
Oh, yeah, good.
It was nice to see, you know, the, for us that live here, we recognize the trails and, and all the different areas where they were at. So that, it was just, that part was neat, you know?
Yeah.
Like the, the content of the movie. It was, it was a good movie, you know, but it's not something that I would dial into to watch. But because, man, and it was nice to see in the credits where it listed all the veterans by name, Chief Erstall, village council and anybody that's from the village that participated. Bobby that McCleary that sits down by Italianos every day, all day long.
Yeah.
He was in the movie. They got a couple of different scenes with him in it, so.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah. Yeah. Have to remember, fun screen. Can they see me, Mary, or Michelle? Yeah, you're right here.
You're right.
Oh, that's right there, I am, hi.
You're the one in the blue.
I'm the one in the blue? Well. It's been a long day. I have a meeting in the morning with Kimball.
Oh, yeah?
That, that Don Johnson, uh, he's being promoted or something, so he's bringing the new guy in to meet me tomorrow. So I'll remember to ask them about the news paper, I brought it up last night when we got home.
You know, I have, uh, one of the kids that worked with, um, Metta Night. And I asked him, I think, Rob, if you guys, you know, Kimball doesn't miss him days, would you guys do? No, no, no. I mean, that's like, it's all the way down to Metta Night or more. He was right on the curb of the, like.
Well, what Don, what Don had said to me was, is they were getting part of every town done on the right day, they just weren't getting the whole town done. In multiple communities and.
Well, and then that's understandable.
Right. But I wish you guys would have said something when they missed you and didn't come back for a whole week. I, I know that there was.
Yeah, I called them and then Dave called them, you know, they said, you're up tomorrow. But it was just from the church, now it might have been all last Monday. I'm just, I was just curious if there was something going on or if it was just a band power shortage.
That's crazy. You know, the same for you, but they, it was the old fashioned.
That's what Linda said.
On Saturday?
No, not Saturday, we're thinking, but they did have to, they had clamps.
Yeah, they had, they had two guys who were dealt with at the back. They must be scrambled.
I told Linda yesterday, well, I asked her yesterday, we have this commercial, they're work, commercial, and they, your books, like, and you call, they're there. They always ask, you know, in case we come early, they want to use it, they, I'm like, they're at five forty-five, you can call whenever you want, you know? And they are, if I call them, they call Wednesday before four o'clock, Thursday, Thursday. And it's great. Every Saturday, they go, so they come on Saturdays and come for us if they need to.
Pretty good to try and move our meeting along. Let's not, uh, have a BZA hearing before our meeting will push us back anymore. It should have been. The food truck. Pick ones in this council.
There, there were pieces, parts out of each one that I kept away.
Okay, well, next month you can, you can consolidate them, and send.
I like the longer one the best, because it's a year.
It's long.
The, the five day year.
Yeah, I know, I know, the longer they are, the more thorough they are, but what are you gonna do? Yeah, there were some really crappy ones that I just rejected completely, so those were, those, all three were decent, I thought. Just you guys, whatever you wanna do, there's board, county, health, health department on certification, yeah. Don't just make your recommendation of the sections you like and. And we'll move it right along. Kerry Vettory asked me today, and I hope I didn't misspeak. Cause they're gonna have food vendors at Art on the Hill. And I said, well, because it's kind of a carny situation, you know what I mean? It's kind of, it's kind of like you have food vendors down at Potato Festival. Right. And they're allowable for those kinds of situations. I don't, I see that as the same situation, you know? We've never had a problem with that, it's just the standalone ones that just randomly show up as, not as part of another event. Right. You know, cause we know that food vendors are part of the event of, uh, Potato Festival, they're part of the event.
Two of the pieces of legislation that you, that forwarded to us, address that type of a situation.
Right.
They're exempted from.
Right. And that's, that makes sense.
Oh, absolutely. But they still have, you know, requirements and have to part.
Or they shouldn't be on the road at all anymore.
Right.
I'm hearing these voices. Really?
Yeah.
I'm going down stairs, I'll be back, maybe it'll be over when I get back. Don't want to leave without. I have their packets for their next hearing. They need to pass out if, if they come out while I'm downstairs. Yeah, they just have to decide on a date, I guess, tonight before they adjourn?
Yeah. And, um, I still don't know if I'm going on vacation, but if it's after the council meeting, I won't be able to participate, so you have to do the whole thing in person.
Have to do what?
You have to do the whole thing in person, if, if it's the day after, or later. Whatever.
And Tammy said, after the eighteenth or something, that she's gonna be gone somewhere.
Okay.
She said the last week in June, I think.
Okay.
The eighteenth, though, I thought was the soonest we could get it for the three days for the paper and then ten days out, out. Being tortured by a mosquito in my, on my office here.
That's for your next BZA hearing.
It's coming up?
Yeah, I'm another one.
Yeah, yeah, we just, we just discussed that.
Well, it shouldn't have been discussed in there.
Well, no, we didn't discuss that, we discussed timing, we didn't discuss the meeting at all, it was just the timing.
Which I, I just simply said, what days are people available?
Cause I'm out of town for a while.
Oh, Tammy's out of town.
But we've had it all resolved.
Other people attend that meeting other than who is in the room?
I'm sorry?
Other people have to attend the BZA meeting other than who's in, who was in that back room? Just saying. But you came up with a date?
Well. We came up with a tentative date, it, it's only penciled in at this point.
Okay.
They can do that at the end of this, finish this meeting before they adjourn, set up their next hearing.
Yeah.
All right, here we go. So we will call this meeting back to order. At seven oh four. I'll just run through a roll call. One thing that I will note is that we are looking to grant this, however, conditionally, and the, the condition is really rather straightforward. It's that any changes to the mural need to be subject to review by the Board of Zoning Appeal, so in effect, we're granting a, a variance for this mural, and this mural specifically. On that, I'll do a roll call. Wes Hawkins, yay, Roy Peck, yes, Randy?
Yes.
Uh, Tammy?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
All yays. And it's been approved. Well, uh, any discussion? All right, we'll call this meeting, uh, we'll motion to.
Motion to adjourn.
You can't adjourn, you're scheduling a next meeting.
Oh, we're just scheduling a next meeting.
How does the twenty-third work for everyone? Why?
Time.
Yep.
Mary Ann? Have everything in person, it'll be me.
Are the citizens able to attend in person?
Governmental meetings are exempted and it's basically, for all the restrictions, so it did anyway as of today. You could probably do a Zoom thing so Mary Ann doesn't have to.
Twenty-third is fine with me.
We'll figure something out.
So what's.
What day of the week is that?
It is Wednesday.
That's following council week, okay. I was making sure that it wasn't.
I got, I got.
The shade tree.
That was the conversation. With dates.
So.
I looked at my calendar, so you know.
So it's six thirty, is that six thirty?
Six thirty works.
Mary Ann?
That's fine.
All right, now that we have that, uh, more than penciled in, it's cemented in, um, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So it was, uh, Randy motion.
Sorry.
And then yay, yay.
Yay.
All right.
Thanks, Bill.
Steve motioned.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tammy?
Oh, just sort of get in the center.
Who motioned that? Okay.
We will be in full motion on the twenty-third?
On the twenty-third, yes, sir.
Randy, I should have made the motion. And Roy.
Thank you.
I saw that look on her face.
Yeah, Randy, only if you want to shut the state down again.
Yeah. He can, he, he can shut it down from the tenth until the nineteenth, I'll be in Tulsa. He can do whatever he wants for that week, when I get back, it better be opened back up. Cause Cory and my, Roy's fiance, her son, bought a house in Tulsa. And she's doing residency for pediatrics. So my vacation, which was supposed to be on the Outer Banks, is now in Tulsa painting his house. Hey, not exactly sure how that worked out. Actually, I know exactly how that worked out, my son decided I needed to work. Or Scott, I never know which one I'm supposed to call you, what are you going by now?
In here, I have to go by Scott.
Okay, hi Scott, how are you?
Somebody in the middle, it's a, Randy voted on, it's not Scott.
Then it would be me and not you.
It would be a big joke, you know?
Yeah, I get it, so.
People don't have kind of sense anymore.
So you're staying out of trouble now, ain't you?
Yeah.
Oh, are you? Oh, so you make ambushes, oh, oh yeah, I've done stuff. I got one for you. This winter.
Okay.
It's, it's, uh, the angle. And it'll be, I'm actually, I might have to do a lot of things, um, not a closet, but for that next. You got it, Bart?
I do that.
Here, write your number down, I do, but write your number down.
Sure. Yeah, it's exciting.
Me and I, Kevin, I, Kevin, I, I.
Might have a better place. It's not a better place.
That's because I didn't tell you that you had to keep... Some people like to have them.
We're gonna spend some time together. Thank you. Have a good night.
I'm gonna say something to Mary Ann again.
Yeah, I highlighted that.
It's completely out of my role. The software?
In a different spot.
That's what you do.
So I do, I'm a, I want to trade that. So I manage...
I didn't even catch it when I...
That's second. It's on the back page.
She sends it to John and I and Michelle to look at, so shame on us.
What are you looking for?
I, Heather's not on this committee. And you have her second.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, she's second. I seconded, not Heather's.
Call to order.
I enjoy it. Yeah, it keeps me busy.
It's kind of, I have a lot of...
Okay, Phil, we're gonna get our meeting going here.
I'm sorry. Have it actually been done?
Thanks, Steve. That takes you to the furnace room.
Okay, we called Plenary Commission, meeting June 2nd, 4/7/10. Everybody, Pledge of Allegiance, please. It's nice to do it again.
Yes, it is.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Okay, everybody had a copy of the minutes. There's one correction that we've noted already on this second. For the motion to adjourn should be Tammy versus Heather. Are there any other additions or corrections?
Motion to accept is amended.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any citizens' comments? Okay. Zoning inspectors' report turned in and on file. We got an email sometime today.
And you have a hard one.
I do have one question for you, though, Mary Ann, on open applications.
Yes.
Oh, Crooked River.
Yes.
That's the flower shop?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
They had a sign company working and then they dismissed their sign company. And he came and picked up all the zoning requirements and is gonna try and figure it out himself. I offered to meet with him.
Okay, did, I don't want to be a... What, ragged? Breakaway excursions get a sign permit?
No.
Okay, they've got a new sign with a kayak hanging on it down on the old... I don't remember what was hanging on that sign post.
It's a sign.
No, no, it's...
Oh, Butch's Welding.
Yes, yes, yes.
That was Butch's Welding, yeah.
Okay, so that's something that's gonna need to be addressed.
Okay.
If I may say something. On 10767 Reservoir, Mary Ann, I heard that they've started work up there.
10767? Oh, have they?
So we'll have to check that out tomorrow.
It's hard to tell when you drive by, at least for me, what...
Well, the neighbor said that they were watching moving ground today, so...
Okay.
Okay. Mary Ann, when you do the violation letter, can you date those?
Pardon?
What date you sent those out? The violation letters, can you put a date when you send those out? Just so that we can kind of keep track of when those went out?
Oh, sure, I have them right here. So if you want the dates, I have them right here.
You know, so we know it 30 days, kind of thing.
Yeah. The bottom one, the grass and vegetation, went out on May 27th. All the ones that apply to chickens went out on May 19th. And the food truck went out on May 7th.
Okay, any other questions or comments on the zoning report? Okay, we're writing new business, chicken livestock. We've got the violation letters out. Do we want to go any further on this? Do we want to...
I know the last month's meeting, you guys said, let's have her send the violation letters out.
Right.
I just didn't know if somebody wanted more discussion, if you don't...
Well, I'm not sure if anybody's interested in actually doing legislation. I mean...
I think we have, we've got chickens and we have a rooster. Like, the rooster is a separate problem, or is it going with the chicken?
If I were gonna suggest legislation, I would say no roosters. Because it becomes a noise issue.
Correct. Comes a nuisance, right.
And doing a little research on it, you know, the cooperatives recommend so many square feet of chicken coop per chicken. So now we're looking at an accessory building, which would probably require zoning variance. I mean, you know...
I think the variance we have, I mean, what we have now written kind of covers it, but it doesn't say no rooster.
Well, right now, it's totally not permitted. That legislation was just a sample that you guys... As far as I remember, you guys decided not to proceed with that and just make all of them apply for a variance so that you could tailor your solution to each property.
And is that how we want to continue?
We never did give the Board of Zoning Appeals the answer that you were looking for. Like, what do we say? I mean, isn't that what you were asking us and we never did?
So if they did come up and they said, hey... What was my question?
Well, how would you approve it or not?
How would you respond? Let me see the Plenary Commission minutes.
And I think Tammy had said, I didn't, I think you had said, and this is what we have in writing at this, at right now. I mean, this is what's on the books.
He said, if it comes back to the BZA, can we look at the structure of which the animals reside in the pen?
Oh, that's right, because we had that, we had that proposed ordinance.
Right.
And how that was structured and the size requirements and all that online.
Backyard, a pen, and...
Yeah. I don't know, is it... Are we gonna pursue this down the line? After the 30-day notice, is it gonna... Are we actually gonna have?
We have to do something.
Yeah.
So they get the 30-day notice, they come to BZA and say, I want a variance on my chickens. How do we proceed?
And how do we proceed if somebody who wants to have chickens says, well, they have chickens illegally, so why can't I? So it could be a snowball effect.
How do we, if they decide not to go for a variance, how do we enforce them getting rid of their chickens?
In the court. Now it's on your court. What time is it? Do we have roosters in here?
No, well, we don't.
Well, all chickens, all... Right now is prohibited regardless of having a rooster.
Right.
Because I saw a rooster today.
Oh, there's a few.
I know the folks on Reagan Street have a rooster.
The folks on Line Street have a rooster.
And I saw it on Prospect, I saw one on Prospect.
Yeah, he's the big one.
Who on Prospect has chickens?
Nobody. He comes up from Reagan Street.
There was a chicken and there was a rooster across from Slupas today.
Yeah.
Oh. So instead of caged, they were free range today.
In somebody else's yard. I didn't know they weren't there for a vote, you know.
Yeah, right.
I just figured they were in their own front yard.
No, no, they come up from Reagan Street.
Oh, that's a problem.
Yeah, I can, when we would sit in Zoom, I could watch the chickens come up through Nina and Cory's yard in my backyard. Because obviously, neither of my cats staring at them. I mean, and the rooster is, he's a, he's a big guy. He's not shy at all. And he was, yeah, he was standing on Nina's front porch one day and the people across the street took a picture and sent it to me at work on my phone. I said, what did Nina get a rooster? Okay. So... I mean, that's the violation.
Yeah, so...
You know, they're not penned, and he has, his yard's fenced in. That's what's so crazy about it, is he has huge bull mastiffs. The yard's fenced in, the dogs never get out, but these chickens get out, the rooster gets out. I mean, they get out.
Well, can't they clip their wings so they don't, can't fly to get over the fence?
I don't know how they're getting, I don't know if they're...
You've never seen one in flight?
No, I've never seen one get out.
Get away from the bull mastiffs.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, they have these big dogs that never get out. They're great dogs. I mean, they're always in.
You're looking for...
And the chickens are running with the dogs.
Chickens.
So...
I think I have it on my desk.
Close friends.
Yeah, I don't know how they're...
So I...
Those are the only ones I've ever seen out. Now, the rooster down Line Street, I've seen at the cemetery. So I do know, because in fact, ask Cookie and Nina, there was not a little number on them down at the cemetery.
Okay.
So...
Okay, so the question still stands, do we want to come up with some sort of legislation on this issue? Or do we want to hold no chickens, no farm animals, other than rural residential?
But even in rural residential, are they allowed to be free range out there, should they be caged?
I don't remember what the zoning code called.
I think it was...
Five acres or more, it's five acres. And it cuts down the property. Both their yards across the street from the ones on the end of the road.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and stand with it, and then if they do come to Board of Zoning Appeals, you know, that's our recommendation then.
That they have had, well, that they've fenced and that they also have...
Five acres.
Habitat.
Yeah, they have, they'd have to meet the...
I think they have to be 50 feet away from everybody's property line. You can do that.
I mean, that's the way it's written.
If, if, for to have them, right.
Right.
That 50-foot space is currently in there now?
Yep.
I mean, there's a lot of stipulations, you know, the size of the pen, or the size of the chicken coop, where the chicken coop have to be.
That's on the proposed ordinance, or is that on the existing ordinance?
Proposed ordinance, I think. Although you do have, you're correct about where the shelter in general have to be. Not specifically chicken, but enclosure, enclosure.
Right.
So, hey...
No, in zoning, it's chapter 400.
Please, I'll have to go through the Board of Zoning.
It says here in 400.01C, if the pen or shelter is not located in a residential district, then it shall conform to the following minimum yard requirements. Side yard 20 feet, rear yard 20 feet. Pens shall be six feet high. The pen or shelter area shall not exceed 1% of the minimum lot area requirements of the district in which it is located. Says... And F, it says, the shelter shall be sheltered, feet and watered no less than 50 feet from any lot line. Number two, the animals shall be kept sheltered and watered no less than 100 feet from any dwelling or water well.
Yeah, but everything you're reading right now does not apply to a farm animal. It says, the following regulation applies to the agricultural uses. Dogs, cats, household birds, guinea pigs, and other species of animals considered a household pet.
Oh, sorry.
So that's the very first thing, so...
My mistake, I apologize.
Well, that's okay.
I thought we had chickens in here, too.
Yeah, the only thing that's gonna cover them is F, animals other than dogs, cats, household birds, guinea pigs, and other species of animals commonly considered a household pet may be permitted on lots with a minimum area of five acres in compliance with the following, there is four different pens.
Okay.
So that would be the cover.
I can have a cow in my backyard if you can have a chicken.
As long as you have five acres.
As long as you've got five acres, yep.
So I guess there isn't out there, you know, for the Board of Zoning Appeals to discuss it. If you want to give them a variance on the fact that they don't have five acres. But then, the good thing is notification to all neighbors, and then they get a chance to...
Are the neighbors frustrated by this in general?
We have gotten no complaints.
Yeah, I don't think... I think if they were penned in, I don't think you would have anybody in to talk about it.
Right.
You know, but...
The reason it came up was because we have a resident that wants to have chickens. And when I looked it up, it wasn't in the, in the laws to have them, so nobody, nobody complained about chickens.
Are they gonna be looking for a variance?
They're waiting to see what happens with the other people with the variance.
Okay, that'll be the test.
Gotta come to us, whatever.
Well, this will be knowledgeable.
Okay, well, you want to keep 400.01F in mind, because that's what's gonna cover it. That's what the variance should be based on.
And then the codified.
And then whatever's in the codified.
Do I need to get the... Count my books so you guys know what the codified says?
We read codified last month.
Yeah, we did. I think as long as, you know, if you know the number, slip it to Wes, so he's got it, because the BZA is the one that's gonna be handling this. It's not gonna come to us.
It's on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, 50501. I knew it was five something, yeah.
I tried.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, food trucks, ample legislation. Everybody had a chance to read that? The stuff that Michelle had? I thought, you know, there are a lot of good stuff there, but I saw pieces, parts in each of different ones that I'd like to see incorporated into one. But if, you know, if we were gonna just pick one, I'd take the last one.
Yeah, my issue was I wouldn't want a food truck parked in front of another establishment that... I wouldn't want a sub one parked inside a sub shop.
And that was addressed in one of those, that you can't be like within 100 feet of a restaurant or something. But if the food truck had a permit prior to the restaurant opening, they could finish out that year and then they couldn't have it anymore at that point. It, they covered, I mean, they're, all three of them are really well-written. It's just the one's five pages and the other two are two and a half. So, for, let's, let me throw the, next meeting, have everybody go through these things. Pick out what you like, what you don't like. Yeah, let's make something that's gonna work well, that's fair for everybody. And then we'll throw it to Michelle. She can combine it into legislation and hopefully from the July meeting, we can kick something to council. And they can handle it.
The next meeting is the July meeting.
Excuse me?
Okay, so you're gonna, you're gonna be able to orchestrate everything at the July meeting so that you have something you can recommend to council.
That's my plan.
That is your plan.
That's my plan. And I'm sticking to it.
I like it.
Okay, any other discussion on that for right now?
No.
Uh, ten sixty-nine Maple complaints, should we have Michelle send official letter, is that?
Okay, we've had people say we need to have the house torn down, it's in such a disarray, that, that's the biggest reason to be sending, having Michelle send a letter, even though she sends a letter, it's going to come back because the guy is MIA.
I have a, I have something of an update on that house.
Oh, okay.
Uh, first of all, I looked into Land Bank for us potentially getting it torn down, but that has to be tax delinquent. It's not tax delinquent because Tax Eas LLC has been paying the taxes. Tax Eas LLC, of course, now has a lien because they paid the taxes, they have filed for foreclosure on that house. It's in process, in fact, in May, last month, they just filed for a default judgment, hopefully getting a foreclosure, which would permit the house to be sold at share of sale, uh, to recoup their money, and another, another creditor called ninety-one something, also filed foreclosure at the end of two thousand and twenty. So those two foreclosures are consolidated right now, and something could happen very shortly. Does that mean that it's going to get sold at share of sale like next week? No. But at least Tax Eas and the other creditor have taken steps to move it forward.
Okay, and I think Tax Eas is the, is who that law firm that I've been in contact with.
Yep, that's our guy.
Everybody's aware of the house we're talking about, right?
I'm in favor of waiting, so it doesn't cost us any money.
It's costing us money right now because, uh, we had to send the ten-day letter because the grass was up above my kneecap, so. Of course, I'm pretty short, but.
If we mow it and we want to get it certified, we have to get that certification to the auditor's office before it transfers, or lose it. But, I mean, you know, so we mowed it at least the one time.
Yeah, he's, he's mowing it this week because the ten-day letter is up, so.
That's good.
Well, it's mowed.
Oh, he got the whole thing done?
Well, the front's mowed.
All, all, he, we're only having him do the front, because the back is fenced. Thirty-five dollars.
Yeah, it's.
A month, he's gonna, I mean, he's gonna do it one ti- once a month.
They must've, yeah, it was mowed when I left, or I left service yesterday.
So he did the entire of the house down. Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
You know what, after, remember the house on Reservoir, we went through this, and we talked about, you know, can we try and get it torn down, remember that? And then look what they've done to that house.
Look what they sold it for.
Well, look how nice it is.
Yeah.
And that's a beautiful house on Maple, I don't want to see it torn down if somebody can really bring it back to life like they did that house on Reservoir, that house was terrible.
I haven't driven up there lately.
It looks really good.
Beautiful on the outside, I'm sure if they did that on the outside, they did it on the inside.
Three hundred and two thousand?
Really?
And set it on a hole.
Yeah, I say we wait, I mean, let's.
They're one of the things on your list for putting a fence up in the backyard.
Man, I would much rather see that.
Okay.
You know, then like.
Right, and then we'll have an owner.
It's just like a shoe shed or something, I'll call it, on the northern lot, because it was two lots.
It's a beautiful house, I mean, the properties, the backyard's nothing, but the house is great, so.
The interiors was awesome, back in the day.
Back in the day.
We looked at it to buy it back in the day.
So, okay, so, we'll kind of maintain status quo there.
Yeah.
Thanks for checking, Michelle.
Hopefully that'll work out.
Since they were going to let me know everything that was happening with it, all they said was, oh yeah, it's going to be going up for share of sale soon. That's all they told me in their email.
Well, and they could, but they still have to get their judgment, so we'll see, but yeah, it is, it's close.
Okay.
Okay, I have somebody that's interested in, in purchasing it when it goes on share of sale, so, and I know it. Barkey Zoller, everything that he buys, he fixes up, so.
Okay, next item, letters to residents on maintenance for trimming brush off sidewalks and talked grass weeds between cracks and paint roof, et cetera.
Good thing, it's just the agenda.
I'm not, I'm not sure whose language that is.
Well, I'll tell you what. The chair can do the agenda next month.
That was the only reason I took the chair is because the mayor said she'd do it.
And what did I say, anybody complains about my spelling? Or my grammar?
I just don't understand. I understood the first part. With talked grass weeds between cracks and paint roof, et cetera. I, I, I don't understand where, where that's going, but what's.
Cracks, the grass that goes, grows between the cracks in the sidewalk?
Okay, I mean, like up at the Lutheran Church, sidewalk in front of the church.
Or going down by Janet Rosa's old house.
Okay.
Or going up High Street, or.
Okay.
Prospect Street.
So we've got letters out to folks?
No.
No, that, that's our trip tomorrow.
Okay.
When Mary Ann is going to take me on a tour, so, because she's learning all our streets, and she's, she's going to take me on a tour.
Will you also be looking at sidewalks then that need repairs in conjunction with this? If you're driving, I mean.
No.
Okay.
We're going to be addressing.
She was giving you a death.
I know.
We're going to be, tomorrow, I mean, if we see something that jumps out at us, we're going to, we'll make a note of it, but we had decided that all of us were going to kind of look around and find a block, and have somebody come out and give us an estimate on replacing all the sidewalk, or the sections of sidewalk that are, are bad, and then approach the property owners and say, hey, this guy will come and do this, this would be your portion, can you afford it? Or do you want us to put on your taxes, or something like that? Because.
Are, are we matching?
No.
So when you said your portion, I wasn't sure if you meant.
No, like if you have four blocks, or however, a sidewalk slab, let's say, and you have four, you would pay your, your four. And if Tammy lives down the street, she has two, she'll pay for her two, that kind of thing. But get a deal instead of you having somebody come out just to do three or four, and her just two. But no, legislation doesn't say, legislation doesn't say that, that village pays for half of it.
So that kind of covered the next.
Okay, where, where, where do we want to start? Let's, we need to start, so let's just, let's, do we want to start on the east side of town, or we want to start on the west side of town? Where do we want to start, and I'll take a hike tomorrow when I get home from work.
Will you take care of Prospect Street?
Okay.
And, uh, because there's a lot of places on Prospect Street that, that need work, and I can, I'll, I can take care of Woodford Park.
You getting that, Mary Ann? Scott's doing Prospect.
I'll do Franklin too, I mean, I can walk up and do Franklin.
So you'll catch Elm on your way up?
Yeah, I can do Elm.
And then John said he would do.
I'll, I'll take the block from High Street North on the east side of forty-four, Main Street.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
And that's a good beginning.
Okay.
Yeah, because some of those, I mean, where the sidewalks are pitched up like that, that means a tree's going to have to come out before they can do a sidewalk.
Gone around.
Yeah, because there's somebody.
The one like in Tom Aldrich.
Almost next year, across the street from your house, it seems like somebody had a.
Yeah, they used to be like by piper, as there used to be, and then my, my tree, my sidewalks are angled, and where trees used to be. And Shaker never replanted any trees, they took out.
I think if we can, if, if we can avoid cutting trees down, that'd be the ideal situation.
Oh, I don't think we should be cutting trees down at all, we're, we're a tree city. I mean, that should be a priority, um, but i- as opposed to going through and, like, telling an owner that has a, a spot like this that they need to fix, I think they need the, I think we need to hit our top ten offenders, if we, I mean, I, I don't think we should be, I think we should be, be taking it by order of magnitude as opposed to street by street. And we all know where the, like, the larger ones are.
Well, then you get into the contest of, okay, well, there's something wrong with this sidewalk, how come you're not having, making them fix it?
Because his isn't at forty-five degree angle. You know, I mean, that's.
But if, if it's still cracked, and there, there's a lot of broken up sidewalks that are raised just two inches, that are trip hazards. I mean, they're a huge liability, so, you know, where do you stop? I, I mean, there, there's a section in the codified that talks about sidewalks, and, and I don't know what it is, but.
No, there is, yeah.
Yeah, but, I mean, that's going to be our guide.
Isn't the reason to go street by street also cost effectiveness, so you can get one block done, maybe get a quote for this many in this area, and, and the, the vendor would make it less money?
I mean, we're one square mile, I don't think there, but yeah, I'm, I'm happy, we, we want to go street by street, I'll take Maple and high up the Elm, and then Elm down to Franklin. And then Franklin down to, I'll take that block.
Okay, yeah, and I'll just go down, I mean, I'll just do all of West Prospect, I'll do Elm over Franklin, and I'll go up to the end.
And I'll do my neighborhood. Okay. I'm the only one, I'm the only one downhill.
I mean, it would just, it would be nice if we could find somebody local that would, you know, think about doing it, or even be interested in doing it, but.
Well, it could be that guy that just gave us the quote from, for, um,
Oh, for the.
Capsule, uh, we have Jeff Benner, I mean.
I have a guy across the street from me who did his own, and, I mean, he did it in like, two hours, you know, Mike McCollum. And, I mean, he's an excavator, and his boys are just big brutes who love the wheelbarrow, everything's, you know, I mean, and they just, and I talked to him once, I talked to him about it a while ago, about things, like, yeah, we can help you guys out, just tell me what you need to do. You know, I mean, but if maybe if somebody's wild, you know, and, I mean, it might be worth it if they could do, you know.
Well, that, that's the thing, you know, if, if somebody wants to do their own, and they, they've got, say, ten-foot of sidewalk to replace, you're looking at a pretty big expense with a small charge load.
Right.
And plus the cost of concrete, so if we, I think, going back, if we can get
Right.
a truckload worth.
Yeah.
You know, you save there.
Yeah, five or six yards is cheaper than one.
Right, yeah, yes.
And that's, that, therein lies the problem, so.
So, w- w- we come up with this list, how's that work? And, because I've never done it, and I don't know that anybody's ever done it. Does it go to council, and they have to approve this list, or do we send letters out as the planning commissioner?
I think we identify them, Mary Ann sends them notifications, very similar to the, the trees, I would assume.
I don't think this has to go through.
I would think I would have to get estimates first.
Say again, please?
I think I would have to get estimates first before I send letters to the.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, but the same process.
I don't know.
Okay, the, the procedure's outlined in nine thirteen oh two.
Nine thirteen oh two.
I'll check the procedure out and follow it.
Make repair, and if within thirty days the owners have not made the repair, the village makes the repair at their expense and send them a statement. So the first thing is notice to the owner.
So, so wouldn't the first thing for us to do is find the locations, have somebody give us a quote?
No. It's the first thing to do is find the location and send the owner a notice, say, do it.
What?
And they have thirty days to comply. And then if there's a collection that haven't done it, then we get a quote for us to do it, then we assess the cost.
How, how, how do we do with the trees? What, what's the, what's the process there?
The tree is different because, uh, we are splitting the cost of trees. So, uh, we send them a notice, and we say, this tree has to come down. This is the quote we got, if you can get it done cheaper, we'll use your quote, and we'll, you can pay half your quote, otherwise, we're going to do it with our quote. And then you'll, you'll either pay it, or we'll assess it.
So we can do basically, well, perhaps we need to reword this, but we can, in effect, do the same thing. This is how much we would quote in order to do this, however, if you're able to do it on your own, or cheaper, feel free to do so.
I would take rewriting the ordinance.
Right, and that's saying that, oh, hey, don't worry about it, we'll take care of it.
I think the easier thing to do would be to notify them, okay, that there are designated areas in your neighborhood that require attention, if you folks would like to get together and have them all done at once, and that's not the right wording, but give them the option to, for, for you to call Tammy, say, hey, I got to get these sections done, you've got to get these sections done, you want to do them at the same time.
Well, I think the letter has to be, hey, you have an issue, you, there's our maintenance code, we are sending this letter out to the, everyone in the, in the village. Find a buddy, or something, you know, like.
Yeah, yeah.
And put it on them to, we're sending it out, the letters, you have a responsibility to take care of your own stuff.
Well, then, so then we're getting away from the bulk discount.
Right. Right, see, that, I think when we, when we first discussed this, I think the idea was that if we could help everybody out and get these sidewalks done, and make the village look nicer, we would be doing our due diligence to homeowners trying to get the bulk discount by spending some time and making some phone calls and trying to get some estimates, and then, you know.
Michelle's saying that's not how the, the ordinance is written.
I know that's not how the ordinance is, I know that's not how it's written, but.
I, I, I think it should be rewritten in, in that manner, and we should suggest a match.
That we can't afford a match.
We don't.
I mean, our budgets.
Yeah, we don't have the money in our budget.
Tell you what, let's do.
But I would, I would, I would like to try.
You don't have concrete money?
Yeah, if we can do some footwork and, and know some pricing upfront, I mean, concrete's going to be concrete.
Yeah, concrete's.
Whether it's going to be Bruggmans, Stones, Alex.
Right.
Whoever, um.
Because I, I can see what's going to happen, and, and I saw it happen, and it wasn't on our street, I can't remember where it was, but it was an old mortar mixer and a pallet of concrete from Home Depot, and garden hose, and, um, of mason. Pouring, and you know what that turns out like? It's not a professional sidewalk job, so that's what we're going to have, is we're going to have a broom finish here, and, you know, pitted concrete here, and, and it's every, it's just going to be a hodgepodge of.
But we don't say that you're, you're, we don't have a stipulation on what a sidewalk has to look like.
No, we don't, but that's there again, this is turning a blind eye to the village in Manaway, and that's, if that's what, if that's what everybody wants the village to look like, then I'll turn my head and I won't look, but
Let's do this.
That's what has happened for a long time.
Let's do this.
I guess that's what we're trying to change.
So what if we, what if we have legislation that says, here going forward, when you repair a sidewalk, it needs to be blah, 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 just like on the sign ordinance, we changed it, so if it changes.
But then if we're not, if, if, I guess that's what I'm trying to say, is if we can help mitigate some of the cost, you know what it costs, John, to try and put one yard of concrete in a truck.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You know, I mean, it's astronomical.
It's going to be a two hundred dollar yard.
Yeah, it's a two hundred dollar yard, or it's three yards for, you know, two hundred and fifty. So, I mean, that's just, that's the nature of the beast.
Well, let's do this.
Concrete driveway three years ago, it is astronomical to have it done.
It is, it's crazy.
Let's do this, every, everybody do the, the sessions that they said that they would do. Everybody familiarize themselves with nine thirteen point oh two. If there are changes that you think, you know, that we'd like to suggest to council, let's come up with them. So, you know, we can say that it's a six-sack limestone, or six and a half sack limestone, or whatever, and, and a broom finish versus a, a trowel finish. You know, let's I mean, if we're going to tell them to do it, let, let's let them know that this is the way it's got to be done.
Right.
Nine thirteen oh four says specifications, sidewalks within the village, uh, doesn't have them, but it says sidewalks within the village shall be constructed within the specifications that are available at the village administrator's office.
That was a cute smile, Marie.
This is where you get to make your regulations and bylaws that aren't in conflict with ordinances, quick, jump on it.
I have a couple questions. Um, in this discussion, it seems like we're going back and forth to replacing a couple blocks here and a couple blocks there, to replacing the whole, the whole, the whole street um, to get a good price, or, so I don't understand that, and the other question is, um, if we have a bunch done at one time, uh, I don't know, you, you won't have an answer, I don't think, uh, about vandalism, I mean, you're worried about the finish on these sidewalks, but you're going to have. but you're going to have, you're going to be walking down the street looking at body parts drawn into your sidewalks.
What's your question on that one?
How are you going to stop that?
Well, I think it's a little harder in front of a house than it is down at the village park.
Okay.
I mean, for one...
Yeah, we're not talking about doing a whole street just on... So if you're not doing a whole street, saying that one person's going to have one finish and one person's going to have another finish, they're all going to be different anyways because the ones you're not pulling up are going to be different than the ones you're putting in.
And that's what we're talking about, being very specific about how, excuse me, the quality of material that's used and how the finish is going to be on it. How thick it's going to be.
How wide.
How wide? Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
And in some cases, it might be the whole sidewalk from one end of the block to the other depending on... If you went down by Janet Rose's old house, where it starts to take...
Yeah.
It's like only this wide.
It's a one-person sidewalk.
And it's so pitted and stuff, the whole, all the way down to the end of where it stops, at the curve of park, needs to be replaced. And there's only three houses there, so that's quite a bit of sidewalk.
That ordinance you read gives the impression that there are specifications. Right?
I guess in 1995, when that was enacted, there probably existed some somewhere in Ed Trigo's office.
So now it would be Mary Ann Fabian's office.
Mary Ann can come up with some that fit the bill.
Boy, it'd be nice if we had a street and could just do the sidewalks.
Well, and here's the thing. Once the county starts replacing water lines and a lot of the water lines are in the tree lawn area, they're going to be having to replace some of the driveway aprons and sidewalks in those areas because they're going to have to do things to the lateral line. So, I mean, yeah, so... So we know also what the county's doing, when they're doing what they're doing.
Boy, didn't we have a homeowner that asked, "We said, 'Hey, gotta replace that,'" and then it got tore up the next year.
Yeah. Exactly.
And replaced by the county.
The man always right of 2021.
Well, let's go with our plan. Let's review sidewalks in our areas that we said. Take a look at the sidewalk ordinance and let's get working on it anyhow. Say that we've done something with it. And Mary Ann, if you could keep your eyes open for specifications in your office, I mean, you ought to know where they're at.
Or, you know, you could call the county, call Mr. Roberts, Randy Roberts at the building department, and he can probably tell you what the county ones are to give you an idea.
All right, and thank you, everyone, for walking around and looking. That's nice for the help.
No problem. Okay, any other conversations for new business?
No.
Let's jump on to old business. Tom Van Hocken. I've got nothing new to report on that. The guy from regional planning had suggested that they could do the, a grant with points.
For that building?
Yeah. Is that something we want to talk to him about?
Do we have a buyer yet?
Yeah.
You had talked about a buyer.
They, yeah, they had somebody that was looking at it, but apparently they never called him back.
Never got back.
And John had me contact Chris Craycroft from Portage Parks District. They're not interested in it at this time. So...
What's he selling it for?
You know, that paddle grant, it's so nice. What's he used for that?
The building's taken. I mean, it's more, it sounds like he wants it removed more than anything.
His plan is, should the grant come through, he's going to remove the building. He's taking it down and he'll probably take it out to Bruggmans and dispose of it out there and...
Well...
I guess he needs to come to a meeting and tell us exactly what he wants for it.
Okay.
I mean, we've heard through the grapevine what he paid for it, so I'm interested to see what he wants for it.
Right.
Okay, I gave him a call.
Especially if, you know, if you can get a grant to take it down, and it's no money out of pocket to him, then, yeah, then what does he want?
If he just wants to be kept hold on what he paid for it and maybe enough to cover the cost of the demo and cleaning anything up that needs cleaned up, then...
That's the scary part. Clean up anything that needs cleaned up. The unknown is what worries me.
We talked about, does he need a core sample?
Yeah, core samples, yeah.
Okay. Do you want me to see if I can get him here to the July meeting?
Sure.
If he has new information or solid information, you know.
I'm sure he does. Okay, I'll give Tom a call and see if we can get him here for July. The Target of Opportunity Finding for the funding, probably, for the east side of Main Street through CDBG. Was that just an open discussion when you were talking about that or was that during the BZA meeting?
What?
That... That the village can't do it.
The village cannot apply for the funds for the east side of Manaway because we cannot develop private property. And where they are going to be raising the wall and taking the stairs out is beyond the right of way and it's private property. And so I received an email from Lisa and Todd last week one day and wanted to know if we were ready to apply for the grant since we're supporting it. I said, "Our legislation said that we were supporting them doing the project, but we weren't going to invest in the project." So she said that then the commissioners would have to apply for the grant.
Yeah, I thought we'd been pretty clear about...
I thought that's how the conversation was, is we weren't...
We're not blighting anyone?
No investment at all.
Right.
We were just blighting it and done.
We are blighting it and done.
Okay, and that's been done, right? We've done what we're going to do.
Yes. I mean, you know, if he needs fundraising or something, sure, I'm sure we'll help him. I offered to see if council could assist in the TA hours if he needed somebody to write the grant. And she said, "No," that they would take it out of their hours. So it's going to be their project with him.
Cool, okay. It's a good thing.
Yeah.
It's fine.
Okay. You still going to table the fee rental inspections?
Until September, we said, when we're on vacation.
I knew there was a reason that happened.
Uh-oh, wait, when are you on vacation?
Pick them up.
September what?
The 11th to the 25th or something like that.
In that stretch of time, we'll get stopped on.
That's okay. The meeting will be before we leave.
The meeting will be before we leave any of it, so...
Because that's the week after.
Now we're the first Wednesday, not the second Tuesday.
Wait a minute, the week after.
I hope I wouldn't be here for that.
Well, Wes and I were making plans with that, are you?
Well, it kind of changes things now that we're the first Wednesday of the month instead of the second Tuesday of the month.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move to zoning maintenance issues. Christopher Matthews, construction at Spur Street.
It's in the county's hands. They gave them the permit.
Okay. West Prospect Street, Mark Miller.
Okay, here's the glitch there.
It's the for sale sign.
Actually, he... It did transfer and it's... And I went to the auditor's website and it said that Mark had paid $25,000 for it and he sold it to Victoria Mats, M-A-T-Z, for $46,000 on like May 13th or something. And so I called him today to see what he could tell me about it. And he said he gifted it to her, which was fine because he did it, and that's none of our business. And she's going to try and sell it, so I have no idea. And he didn't offer to give me any of her contact number, you know, a phone number for her, but I do have an address because she's got a mailbox here in Manaway, so I don't... I guess he flipped it and flipped it to her and she's going to try and flip it again, I guess. I don't know. I have not spoken with her, so we'll have Mary Ann, shoot her a letter. Post office box 89, Manaway, Ohio.
Okay.
The house just keeps on giving.
Yeah.
This is ridiculous.
I can't imagine anybody buying it for...
He said it would have been torn down, but they kept putting him off and whoever was going to come and tear it down.
Give it to the fire department for a burn.
No comment.
Okay. Anything, any of the other items?
Lonny Love has been slowly, slowly, working on his stuff, I mean... And it's fine, as long as we can see that he's doing something at this point. I'm not going to badger him. I will, you know, have Mary Ann reach out to him and see if he needs another extension. Make a note of the things that he has gotten done, that we appreciate that. And then Frank Yatso for the old Doc Grayson lot on the backside. He spoke with Mary Ann and said he was working on cleaning it up and also proceeded to tell her that he was, had it almost done. He was getting rid of the cars. And he's going to put a microbrewery and a restaurant? Was that what it was? Some kind of high-end restaurant?
Uh, yeah, he wants, eventually he wants to put a microbrewery in there and that has food, yes.
It pleasant view?
No. Manaway Greens empty lot where the almond boys had the wood.
Where the hotel was.
Where the, replacing the hotel.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a picture of it somewhere, yeah.
Yeah, they're both over there, before and after. Okay. So before that, is he going to put a roof on his house?
Well, she's going to be sending him something for the roof on his house.
All right. We have notes of things to send people.
Yeah. And then Jason Snyder. Some lady called that said that she was his fiancee and she wanted to talk to us and we said that we needed to have his approval to talk to her about whatever they were going to do there because we had no idea who she was. And she's never called back and he's never called back. He's awful busy, she said. And that's all I got.
Does anyone else have anything?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Aye.
Aye. Wes motion to adjourn, Tammy second, all ayes.
Thank you.
And that was Tammy.
Thank you.
Tammy, T-A-M-M-Y.
I get it, thank you.
Good night, Mary Ann.
Good night.